We have a board member that has some sickness in his family and he is asked to join us electronically. Do I hear a motion to let him join us?
Motion.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second thing. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say no. Okay, Mr. Tam can join us.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, our next is pledge of allegiance, Nancy with Ms. Garrett. Would you ladies pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda? Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say no. Motion carries. Next thing is recognition. Mr. Den.
Madam Chair, we've got a few recognitions tonight with some students. First, do we have Jessica Trent or Taylor Everly here tonight?
Yes, I'm there.
You're there? Come on up, Ms. Roberts.
Well, they told me they weren't coming tonight. Taylor Everly is a sophomore at Thomas Walker High School. She has been a member of FBLA for the past two years, very active. This year she placed first in the region at EBAWIS, and that allowed her to advance on to state competition at Reston, Virginia, I think that weekend of April 11th. And she finished number five in State of Virginia Intro to Business Communication for second year. And we found out last week that somebody ahead of her dropped out. And she was able, if she wanted to, she could go on to Orlando and compete nationwide. And it's not going to work out for her, so unfortunately. Still proud of Taylor and all her work in FBLA.
I think we've done a certificate for her.
You did a certificate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mrs. Roberts. Congratulations.
Next, I think we've got Mr. Delp and Mr. Mullins that are going to recognize some students. I think first Grayson Huff for the, what he did in the Kentucky Welding Institute National Competition. So I'll ask all of them to come up along with Mr. Long.
Grayson is on his way.
We're going to skip Grayson, go on to the next. He's on his way.
They're going to skip Grayson, go down to the Skills USA State Competitors. Mr. Mullins.
Thank you. Oh, it's Career Technical Night. I'm so proud of all this bunch that's here tonight, even Taylor. It's wonderful. These are all Career Technical, CTE students. We're very proud of them and their accomplishments. Thank you, parents, for all of your support and your help with them. So I'm going to talk about a couple things, Mr. Den, if it's okay, and y'all just have to cut me off. I'd like to talk about this place. But I've got DECA going on tonight, and I've also got FCCLA, and we're going to start with Skills right now. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about the Skills Club, and then Mr. Mullins can chime in and tell you anything he wants to add. So Skills Club last year had seven members. Seven, I think, was the top number. And now this year, well, they have, it's got some new advisors and they've taken over. And now we have increased that. I think, what was the last count? A hundred and five. A hundred and five students now in Skills. I'm just, woo! Skills includes a lot of different brands. It's not just, it's electrical carpentry, drafting, computer science, everything's rolled up into that one. And then FBLA has all the business, DECA is marketing, and FCCLA, it's home ec. That's what we always knew it for, and Ms. Ely was right on the whip me. But it's family consumer science, home ec. So Mr. Bishop, Mr. Harbor, Mr. Bales went full force on the Skills. And they have, I want to tell you some of the things that they did. They went at Christmas time, they got presents, the Skills Club took up presents and supported Head Start, which is most precious to my heart because I used to teach Head Start. So they got presents for all the Head Start students for four centers, and then additionally helped out with two that my church had picked up. So we wound up doing, how many presents, Mr. Mullins?
Uh, maybe right, two hundred.
Okay. That many presents the kids brought in and got involved. Also, they started doing fundraisers in September to try to get all the money. They did a float at the Tobacco Festival, and then they did a Christmas tree at the nursing home up here in Pennington. And on the Christmas tree was all tools. So there was like combs and hair dryers, hammers, screwdrivers, electrical outlets, things like that. And that's what we put up on a wooden tree. That was also very good. Good job on that.
All right, so I've got, I've got some names to call out.
Yours are in order, so you call it out.
These are the folks that made it to state. It's in criminal justice, it's Sierra Longsworth. Collision Repair Technology, Justin Franklin. Criminal Justice again, Haley Parsons. Criminal Justice, John White. Now, this is Electrical Construction Wiring, Seth Calvin. Electrical Construction Wiring, Morgan Graham. Technical Drafting, Tanner Everly. Total Fantasy Look, Alexis Atkins. Total Fantasy Look, Cassie Bailey. All right, this is in welding, it's Jacob Markham. All right, also in welding fabrication, Maddox Hounshell. Welding Fabrication, Taft Aldrich. Welding Fabrication, Red Robbins. Technical Drafting, Daniel Pennington. Total Fantasy Look, Riley Lidle. Back to Huff.
Grayson.
So Grayson Huff.
Grayson competed at a national level this year. KWI, there was 137 kids in the competition. He had a hurt hand and finished sixth out of 130 in the night.
So we're talking about two different competitions here. KWI is Kentucky Welding Institute. We have five students that's going to attend that coming up in different times. They don't all get to go at the same time, but they're at different times. We have students there before. They come out making fat money, more than all of us probably. So, you know, so great opportunity for them. Also, these students, they were skills. They rode a bus, a school bus to Virginia Beach, 11 hours on a bus to compete. So they competed in their classrooms first with their peers, and then after they did that, that's the local. They moved on to district. So we went to district where we compete against Wise County, Scott County, Buchanan, Dickinson, and Russell. All of us compete together, and they came out on top and got to go to the state competition. So we're very proud of this bunch. There was 19 students that went to state competition with skills. So we're very, very proud of them. So let's give them a great big hand. All right, and this is our advisors. Let's give them a hand. Appreciate all the hard work. Thank you.
Mr. Long, if you would, before you take off, I know you had a special day. You had a signing the other day. Would you talk a little bit about that? And I know a number of these students were involved with that.
Yes, so we had a signing day. In the past, we just didn't have as many. So signing day for us, and as my wife said, what do you mean signing day? Is that for college? I said, yes, it's for our colleges. So these are for students that are going for a job, they're going to a technical school, or they're going to be going to any kind of a training program, and it can be a college/university also. So anything that they, like, for example, our CNAs, we tried to get all of them to come, but they were working, which that makes me very proud. That's what we want. Our goal is to get kids a job and get them to work and stuff. But we had seventeen kids that signed, some of them were lineman programs, some of them were welders here going to KWI. And we had to have a student going to Virginia Tech, signed to go there for the agriculture program. So we're just very proud of all those students. It was a very nice thing. Savannah Smith, we also had three girls to certify with their cosmetology license. State boards, they passed those state boards, and are certified cosmetologists. And that is Savannah Smith and Alexia Atkins at Thomas Walker are those two. And I see her face and lost her name. Right, we have Ollie Hyburn also. It'll come to me in a minute, okay?
Savannah, the day she got her license was her birthday. She told me this today. She was offered three jobs that afternoon. And went to work this afternoon at her new shop in Big Stone. So.
Mr. Long and all the instructors at the Career Technical Center are doing a lot of good work. And I just wanted to make sure we recognized them. And it was good coming over and watching those students and those parents and seeing the opportunities that those kids now have.
Yes, thank you so much.
Just wanted to recognize you as well.
Thank you. Can I meet your DECA FCCA real quick?
Yes, sir.
So FCCA also, they went to Virginia Beach and competed in their state competition. We had ten students to go compete there, and I'll tell you their names. Patient Beeks, Chloe Stidham, trophy gold in the Chapter Service Project Display. Jayden Ely placed silver in public policy. Caitlin Moore and Emma Wright placed gold in focus on children. Rhea Crabtree and Hannah Jones placed silver in event management. Morgan Lindsay and Alyssa Laws placed bronze in repurpose and redesign. And Emily Snowden placed bronze in job interview. Patient Beeks, Chloe Stidham, and Jayden Ely advanced to the nationals, and they are raising money at the moment to do that. That's FCCA. DECA, we took seventeen students to Virginia Beach for DECA competitions. One of the students I talked to, they competed in their one competition against sixty-three or sixty-four other students out there. There was 4,000 DECA students out there when we went. And so two of ours came out on top, and we are advancing to nationals. It was Morgan Graham and Talmage Gunner. Morgan had other things that he could not attend, but Talmage did go compete in the national DECA competition, and that was in Anaheim, California. And he just got back. So we have Morgan Graham and Talmage, Blair Cowton, Riley Crabtree. And they were in hotel and lodging management. My Esquivera for human resource management. Annabella Fritz, marketing communications. Caitlin Langley, principles of marketing. Sabella Ury, personal finance literacy. Lindsay Nicodem and Molly Stapleton for hospitality and tourism. And then John Galloway, business finance. Elizabeth Laws, food marketing. Caroline Witten, leadership development. Abby Myers, leadership development. Kalen Penigraff, apparel and accessories. And Claire Sage, leadership development. We're very proud of the DECA students also. Thank you.
That's all the recognition we have tonight, Madam Chair.
Okay, our next item is public comment. And just remember, if anyone wants to speak, you cannot mention anyone's name unless you're doing sort of interviews. So do we have any public comment? Hi, Ms. Robinson.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Den, members of the board. I'm Phil Hensley, District Three. I'm also chairman of the Vocational Advisory Committee. And at our fall meeting this year, Mr. Long let us aware that our ROTC program has always been able to count ROTC as ninth grade PE. The state department had made a decision that that can no longer be done, even though we had written approval and have been doing it for over thirty years. We took a letter to the Veterans Meeting in October that had Senator Todd P. and Kerry Killmore at the meeting. Let them be aware of the issue. They both were very familiar with ROTC program. Mr. P. is a major in the National Guard, and Ms. Robert Tam is a colonel of the National Guard. But to make a long story short, they introduced the bill in the General Assembly that by law, ROTC will count as ninth grade and eighth grade PE. That's extremely unusual for the General Assembly to override the Department of Policy. But it's polished, the governor signed it. I've talked to the Lehigh principal, keep at ease with that change, that in the eighth grade and ninth grade students who will take ROTC instead of PE, that we can get our enrollment back up to above fifty and recover the federal funding for that program. Right now, the program's at 100% local, but with these numbers, that we think we can get. And I think there's another recommendation, as you're aware, that the committee's made that will help that program. But what I'm asking the board for is if we could get thank you letters to Senator P. and Kerry Killmore for that. That would just be, I'm surprised that they got that done. That wasn't easy.
It's great.
But it was, and thank you. And with the program getting better, Mr. Long's also got permission where the ROTC can use the utility uniform instead of the dress uniform. The students will be much, the student input is the progression inform. At Thomas Walker, they're wearing utilities, camouflage utilities, and it's much more popular with the students than the dress uniform. And if that's been approved, the other side of that is we're probably going to be coming back to the board to ask for some money for uniforms, probably something in the $5,000 range. But anything we can do to get this program back up, convert receivers federal funds, will make a big difference in the county's money. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd be more glad to do that with the board placing those letters.
Yes, please do. Okay, any more public comment? Now we'll move on to board comments. Anyone on the board? Got a comment?
I want to say real quick, if you don't hear me, that I did give this something for making it available for me to join tonight. I'm sorry I can't be there. My dad had surgery today, he's looking fine, he might have another two weeks. But I appreciate this opportunity to join this way. I also want to say that I attended the Southwest Virginia SBA meeting last week in Abington. Great turnout there throughout the region. Got to pay some of the hard work from some of our students. Last year's winner from Lee County was recognized once again. So it was a great experience, and Southwest Virginia was very well represented.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other more comments?
I'm just glad to see the Career Technical Center growing. It has made such a big difference, and I would highly recommend any parent have their child take a trade. Take a trade. I took it when I was in high school, and it's worth it. It's worth the doubt that having that backup trade and experience and certification.
Well, I think some people think that we only want to push a college education, but we need people in all work areas. And vocational is really, so thank you for all you do.
Madam, one thing I thought I would mention, we've been before the board before on the tiny home construction project. It looks like it is going to happen next year, and we will be back before the board for an appropriation on that. But it was, that's got a lot of permit issues that we had to work through. That one's tough.
Okay, end of the consent agenda. Item number six, A, approval of minutes from the April 11th, 2024 regular meeting. B, approval of claims and expenditures. C, approval of field trips. Lee County Career and Technical Center, Beth Shell. Virginia State FFA Convention, Virginia Tech. Lee County Career and Technical Center, Crystal Edley. FCCLA National Leadership Conference. Item D, approval of new Lee County School Board policy. JHCD-A, Anaphylaxis Severe Allergic Reaction. Item E, approval of update to LCSVP GCVD-VR1 Staff Attendance Incentive. F, approval of JROTC Participation Class as a PE credit. G, approval of authorization for the Division Superintendent to fill vacancies existing or occurring between May the 10th, 2024 through June the 13th, 2024. Do I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we hear a second? Second. Okay, we have a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next is reports of the board. Do we have any reports of the board? Eight, reports of the Division Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I start with my list, I would like to say that you have a gift that we shared with all the staff for Teacher Appreciation Week and Teacher Appreciation Day. That's the little book you have there with you. We gave those out. Also, Linda Woodward gave us cookbooks that I think Ms. Combs has, and Origin Projects, where she may have given them to you. Y'all may already have those. And then I would like to thank Ms. Ely and Ms. Garrett for attending the Board of Supervisors Budget Workshop along with Ms. Belcher this week. We did that on Tuesday night, and I think that was a productive meeting with that group. So I just wanted to mention that. My first item is, I'm doing this a little premature because I think these students will not have a problem, but tomorrow, Mountain Empire graduation, we have a number of students that will be graduating from Mountain Empire before they graduate from their high school. And this list continues to grow because, you know, I want to thank you all and everybody at the high schools for the opportunities that they give these students. But in your agenda or in your packet there, you have a list of names that I'll go through. But these students will be graduating from Mountain Empire tomorrow night before they graduate from high school. I think we've got, let's see, three, six, no, ten from Lee High School that'll graduate with a general studies and associates of arts and sciences degree. That is Raven Elise Bergen, Presley Dane Chance, Emma Fortner, Randall Tomlett Gunter, Brooklyn Jade Middleton, Lindsey Morgan Nicodem, Kalen Reese Penigraff, Chloe Grace Willis, Sabella Sky Eery, and Benson Zane. We also have four from Thomas Walker that will be graduating with an associate's of arts and sciences degree. Leah Beth Cavan, Nicholas Kimberlin, Chloe Long, and Chelsea Wiggins. This is not easy to do because we're graduating with an associate's degree, and we're going to graduate with a high school diploma within a week. And these students have put forth a lot of effort. It gives them a jump start when they go to college because they can get these associate degrees at a fraction of what it would cost when they went to college and give them opportunities. So I just wanted to recognize those students. I know it's a little premature, but, you know, we got a board meeting the day before Mountain Empire graduates, so I just wanted to recognize those students. Next, I'll ask Ms. Leonard and anybody she's got from St. Charles if they'll come up. The State Department gave us notice that for the 23-24 Exemplar Performance School Award, that St. Charles Elementary was one of 37 schools in the state that got the highest academic award. It's not easy to get this. And I just ask that they come forward. I think we've got the certificate that the State Department sent us. It's a challenge, and, you know, for that school to get that, we are so proud of them. And the students there to be recognized as one of 37 in the state of Virginia. So Ms. Leonard and your staff, we are very proud of you. And I'd like for you to say a few words as the structural leader of St. Charles.
Well, I can just say I'm blessed to be leading a great group. They make my job easy. They work well with the students. They have such a good relationship with the students, the parents, and I just could not ask for a better group to work with that we're more like family than coworkers. And I just, I really am blessed, and I know I can't express how proud I am to be part of such a great group.
Congratulations, St. Charles. Congratulations. Well done. Very proud of you.
To let you all know how hard it is to get this. The school must meet the state benchmark in reading, math, and science. Seventy-five percent for reading, seventy percent for math and science, based on the current year pass rate on state assessments. Not including growth or English learner progress. All student groups within the school meet the benchmarks, state benchmarks in reading and math. Seventy-five percent for reading and seventy percent for math, based on the current year. Again, not including growth. For schools with two or more student groups, there's no more than five percentage points between the lowest performing group and all other students in the school. For schools with three or more student groups, there's no more than 10 percentage points between the lowest performing group and all other students. And the school must demonstrate a chronic absentee rate of 15% or lower. So only 37 schools in the state of Virginia could achieve that, and St. Charles is one of them. So we are very proud of Ms. Leonard and that group. Next, Madam Chair, Kingsport Times News, Ryan. We have items from all three middle schools, Eli Del, Pennington, and Jonesville. I highly encourage you to read those. I think the one I had the best fun with this time was, what is a food that you cannot live without? Range from spaghetti to beef jerky. Mom's famous rice and beans. One can't live without apples. Hot chips. Homemade pancakes and syrup. And the last one, dino chicken nuggets because they are so much better than the regular chicken nuggets. Encourage you to read those, and, you know, we're proud of our students for doing that and getting published. In your packet, you have a copy of the enrollment. We were down four from last month, 2,785. Our budget was based on 2010. As Ms. Ely and Ms. Garrett know, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, I told them that we were waiting on the final ADM from the state, but it looks like for the first time in, Mr. Hensley, you gave me a date the other day. Was it the 50s or the 60s that our enrollment actually went up?
From, I just go back to 1969. At that time, we had 60 acres of students in Lee County. And I don't know of a year since 1969 that we've not lost enrollment. And in 69, that was just first grade through 12th. We didn't have kindergarten at that time. So we've been losing students every year until this year. And you're looking at, if that's 70 students, and you know what that does with the state ADM, you're going to pick up some money.
And, you know, I think part of it could be foster children. I think part of it is a lot of parents decided to take their child home during COVID, and they are coming back for one reason or another. But, you know, I'm glad to say that Ms. Belcher and I didn't hit it right, and we guessed a little low, and the enrollment's actually up. So that may be good for all of us.
Some of your alternative programs are working awesome.
Yes.
Your high school and some of the computer-based programs that you're doing, you're picking up students that have dropped out. That's helping them, and it's driving more money for you.
And as a lesson, the board, you know, we have a wildlife school that we've picked up some kids. We've got to join the regional remote academy that we've got some students that are doing that. So that's helped our enrollment, but it's good that we're going in the right direction for a long time. In your packet, you have the Transportation Operations Update. If you have any questions on those, I'll be more than glad to answer those. Also, you have in your packet the Head Start update that Ms. Baker has provided us. I'll be more than glad to answer that.
Does she have enough members now to continue? I know there was an issue one time.
She is still working to get the enrollment for next year. If anybody knows a three- or a four-year-old that would be interested in Head Start, I would ask them to contact the Head Start office, let them go through the application process, and see if we can get that. We try to stay at the maximum enrollment. That helps us with everything. But if you know any of those, I'd encourage you to talk to them, send them to the Head Start office. and send them to the Head Start Office. Update on next school year, I just want to give you a few things that's going on. We had talked at a previous meeting about band at Thomas Walker. Talked to Mr. Smith and administration there and guidance. They are going to do some changes with the schedule to see if that will help the participation with the band. They would like to trial that for another year and see if they can get that enrollment up. Some of the principals at the middle schools have asked about the possibility of hiring a teacher to expand band all the way down to fifth grade. Fifth grade has limited extracurricular classes that they can take and they've asked that that be a possibility. Spoke to Mr. Smith administration there. You all know we had the athletic director who resigned. They are looking at taking care of that in-house and not having that position. You know, with the blessing of the board, that money could be used at the school that they would pay for the athletic director we had in the past, that they could use that. He said that he would like to try that maybe for a year and then report back and see how that goes and give that an opportunity. Both high schools had mentioned asking the board about the possibility of some changes with athletic stipends, possibly increasing some of those and also the possibility of maybe if you had coaches or assistant coaches that had varying, I guess, levels of activity or responsibility that those stipends could be determined to maybe have a different level instead of all assistant coaches getting, say, $1,200. That if you had one that had greater responsibility, greater involvement, they might get more. Some might get a little less. I told them I would mention that to you all. Think it's something we can definitely talk about after the state approves the board and, I mean, approves the budget and, you know, we'll have to go back and revisit our budget depending on what the state gives us. So I just wanted to, we talked about all of those, I think, so I just wanted to bring those to your attention. May has been a number of appreciation dates. May the first was School Principals' Day. Appreciate all the principals we have in our school system. I think we've got some wonderful principals and appreciate everything they do. Also, May the first was Substitute Appreciation Day. I was talking to Mr. Huff prior to the meeting and I think, you know, the number of substitutes we use is a lot. And those people, we appreciate them. You know, a lot of times they don't know which school they're going to that day or what exactly they're going to be doing. So, I mean, the substitutes that we have, we appreciate those. May the third was School Lunch Hero Day. Appreciate everyone in the cafeterias and all they do to make sure our students have breakfast and lunch every day. May the sixth to the 10th is Teacher Appreciation Week with May the 7th being Teacher Appreciation Day. We have some wonderful teachers from one end of this county to the other and we appreciate everything they do for our students every day. May the 7th was also National Fitness Awareness Day. Make all of us know that we've got some drug issues across this nation and make sure that we're aware and do everything we can because schools are places that, you know, you can't have those issues from what kids bring from home. So we want to make that aware. May the 9th was Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Want to make sure we're taking care of our children any way we can, especially their mental health. May the 8th was National School Nurses' Day. We have school nurses in all of our buildings and appreciate everything they do. Just like substitutes, they don't know what's going to walk into their office as a result of a student accident. May the 18th, Speech Pathologist's Day. Appreciate everything they do. And May the 27th this month is Memorial Day and we want to always keep that in our mind and recognize that as well. That's all I have for my reports, Madam Chair.
Okay, and our unfinished business, A, School District Lines.
In your else packet, you all have asked for information about students. That is not going to be released to the public just due to the privacy issues, but you all have access to that. It's seven students, vary from kindergarten up to fourth grade. If you want to wait, action would not have to be taken tonight. You can look at that information and see if you wanted to move forward, but that would add left-hand, right-hand court rally for going towards St. Charles and take that away from currently Dryden to increase enrollment at St. Charles. But you all have that information in your packet, but it's not available to the general public. So I don't know if you all want to look at that before you take action or table that again until you have time to look at it.
I'd like to look at it. Would you like to look at it? Tim, how about you? Look at it.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it, see how the action feels.
Okay.
Well, I don't think we have to table it. We just won't take any action.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, 10 action discussion items. A, action if any to approve updated gifted local plan.
As you all know, at the last board meeting, you all voted to add visual and performing arts. Mr. Graham has added that to the plan and I would ask that you all approve that plan with those items added to it and update that plan at this time.
I would kind of like to see a list of activities for the school year that have been done for the gifted, if possible.
I think I have one on my desk. And I can provide, we'll go into section session, I may as well, Ms. Belcher, she can go in there and maybe locate that on my desk.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the updated gifted local plan?
I'm going to motion.
You want a second? Nancy is moved.
That's fine.
Okay. We have a second, I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passed. B, action if any to approve the adoption of core curriculum for the Virginia Literacy Act.
Madam Chair, what we have on this is with the Virginia Literacy Act, they have went through a new process to adopt a reading series as the core curriculum for that. Ms. Willis is here tonight, somewhere in the back. Benchmark Advanced is the recommendation that has been vetted through the state and vetted through the division. That's our recommendation, I think. How many groups came and did presentations, Ms. Willis?
We had three groups that did presentations. Where did you do the presentation and all of those presentations?
So we had three groups that came and did presentations on the state-approved list and this was the recommendation. If you all will approve this, we can get those materials ordered and hopefully have those long before school starts, which I think would greatly benefit our teachers.
So this is what the state?
It's one of the state-approved curriculums and then we asked people to come and do presentations and they did that for our group, our division, and we looked at it and this is the recommendation from the state list by the division.
Could I ask who was on the committee?
Ms. Willis, who all was involved and came and did, when you all did the presentation?
Reading specialists from all of the schools and any of the middle school's teams because we have to adopt something A five. So the fifth grade was involved as well. So we had teachers come and then we did, we did a wall vote. Pretty much everyone who may be using it next year looked at that. We had some discussions with, we've been working with reading specialists from daylight from where she came and did the presentation, did some training and asked her about her recommendation. All of some other folks that some of reading over to those employment meetings too. So we looked at all of that up. We looked at the majority of the elementary reading specialists of the benchmark. The majority of the teachers that attended both of the sessions. Because if you kind of come down to chief, there was three on the list that we looked at. Pretty much they got zero votes. Nobody was interested in that one. So we came down to chief different series. And we looked at the people who had attended both presentations. The majority of them had selected the benchmark. Benchmark is a company that all they do is literacy curriculum. That's their core team and, you know, from everything, there are several local divisions, I think six or seven in Washington County, Taz will achieve that on the list that are going with that. Some other counties are going the same one that they had, but it was on the approved list. Now, our curriculum that we've been using second term and fourth grade was on the list that our teachers didn't care for. So we didn't even consider it. So that was the process that we used.
All right, thank you, Ms. Willis.
We try to get a lot of involvement with everyone that way. We know when everybody's going to agree, you know, unanimous vote is rarely, if it ever happens. I think of calendar development, it never happens. So, but this was the majority, so we're asking that this be approved so we can get those ordered before, you know, as soon as possible.
Okay. And one of the reasons sometimes we have people asking us, who determined this? So I wanted to be able to answer. So thank you, Ms. Willis. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the adoption of core curriculum for the Virginia Literacy Act of the Benchmark Advanced?
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion, go here second.
Second.
Again, second, I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed? Say no. Motion passed. C, action if any to designate funds for distribution for school board policy, G C B D dash B R one staff attendance incentive.
Madam Chair, this is something Ms. Belcher and I have worked on. This is where the county can allot a certain amount of money to buy back days from our employees as kind of an incentive for them having days where they have not missed. We do this, you know, when we have the money to allow it. Ms. Belcher and I looked and our recommendation is to place $125,000 at this and then the policy has a criteria about how the order would go with, it starts with the higher, I think, the higher date. So the more senior members of the staff that would want to do that would go first and then it would go down. But we're asking that we put $125,000 to this and put this out there so we can get this in this fiscal year.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to designate $125,000? Mr. Williams, would you say motion? Okay, go here second.
Second.
Second, I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Okay, action if any to award a contract related to RFP number 25-1001, copiers and copier, copies and copier service to D E X Imaging.
Madam Chair, we have a recommendation from Ms. Belcher and the team that did the review of the proposals for copiers. We had four proposals, one from Rico, one from Electric Systems, one from RJ Young and one from Dex Imaging. Dex Imaging is a company that actually purchased Johnco, which is the company we had previously with our copiers. They've had phenomenal service and the committee recommends we renew or it'll be a new contract with them. And I think we've had better, I mean, this wonderful service with them. I think we have at least four or five administrators here tonight and I think we've got great service with the copiers that we have now. And the price they gave us included a number of copies before we have to pay anything above. The others had a set per copy and think this is better all the way around financially and for the service we've got. Anytime we've called them and had an issue, they have been out quickly to service those machines and get those up and running because, I mean, they're one of the lifelines of our schools with copies and we just asked that that be approved for a new contract. I think it's, Ms. Belcher, I think it's a 60-month lease typically what it is. So that's our recommendation.
We just lease them, but we don't own them.
We don't own them. There's a clause where we could purchase them, the possibility at the end of the lease. We don't really do that because typically what you're buying is machines that are at the end of their life and sometimes they would hope you would do that for like, you know, sometimes they offer it to you like for a penny. But then you've got to dispose of them if, and, you know, with this company, they put in their agreement, another thing that they will take care of, the old ones bring us the new ones and they do all of the handling, but we don't have full of them.
Okay, do I hear a motion to contract with D E X Imaging?
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion in here second. Okay, second, I'll in, I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Item E, action if any to modify the 2024-2025 LCPS school calendar to make May 15th, 2024 a half-day for all schools.
Madam Chair, this is an item Mr. Hines and I spoke about. Currently, the calendar is for Lee High only because they have the track meet, the district track meet, which is going to cause a lot of congestion at Lee High. There is some obstacles with the buses by dismissing one school and not dismissing all schools. I checked with this bung owner today. We have the time that we could allow it for all schools and it not impact us meeting the instructional requirements for the state. After, you know, tomorrow, we would have 10 days of school left with this being one of them. We would have possibly a half a day that we could miss. Really comes down to Flatwoods because they've missed more time than anyone because of the fire they had and some other instances. But at this time, we could do this and, you know, if the board wants to make this available to all, we could just dismiss all schools next week on Wednesday at 12:05 and we would only run the buses once and not try to make the connection because Lee High impacts a good portion of the county and a good portion of the buses. But we could just dismiss every one at one time. So this is an idea that we'll take action to adjust the calendar.
Okay, I make the motion that we modify the school calendar and make it a half-day on May the 15th. Do I hear a second? And we have a second, I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I don't think we'll get much grief from any of the staff members. Or the administration. I think we still have a student back there too that I don't think is upset over it, so.
Okay, and action if any to approve renewal of current related services contract with Moving Forward Fiscal Year.
Madam Chair, we have a recommendation, Chris, Kyle, you're in that group and student services to renew the award, I mean, the contract with Moving Forward. So I ask that you approve that as well.
Okay, do I have a motion for renewal of Moving Forward contract? Okay, we've got a motion, how about second? Mr. Williams, second. I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, at this time, Mr. Hines, would you read us the Code of Virginia for closed session?
I'm moving to go into closed session, discuss personnel in the Code of Virginia, section 2.2, that's 371181. To discuss student discipline in the Code of Virginia, section 2.2, 371182. And discuss the possible acquisition of a parcel of land in the Code of Virginia, section 2.1, that's 34483.
Do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
There's a second. I'll in favor say aye. Motion carries. We are now in closed session.